I call to order the Wednesday, November 8, 2023, regular meeting of the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. If you read the rule call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Barry?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here, and Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
We have a court.
All right. Would you, everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while everybody's standing, anyone who gives testimony tonight needs to be sworn in. So would you please raise your right hand and swear that any testimony you do give will be the complete truth, so help you God. Thank you. Another reminder, my phone's in the other room, silence your phones so we don't hear any beeps and rings. Another reminder that anyone who gives testimony needs to be signed in. We have a sign-in sheet out in the hallway and up at the podium. Next item is approval of the minutes of our October 11, 2023, regular meeting. I know you've all read those meetings, those minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Motion, Scales?
Second, Barry.
Second, Barry. Discussion? Seeing none, rule call.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, just a quick review of our public hearing procedures. First, the petitioner applicant will be introduced and come to the podium and make his or her presentation, followed by our village staff for comments and questions. And then the public gets a chance to weigh in. And when that's complete, the commissioners will take their turns eventually, hopefully culminating in a vote. As a reminder, our votes are recommending only. The village board has the final say-so. And we have our village attorney, Mr. Zemanek, here to answer any questions that anyone might have. Everyone straight with that? Thank you. Okay, under old business, I don't believe we have anything, do we?
No.
Under new business, first, we have public hearing, PCC 032-2023, requests by Amalfi Properties, owner and Mariani Enterprises, the business owner, regarding the property at 1010 Vandestrial Drive in Westmont for the following. First, a map amendment request to rezone from M Manufacturing District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. Second, a special use permit and associated site plan approval request for accessory outdoor storage for a landscape contractor's office in the M1 Limited Manufacturing District. Who would speak to this issue? Good evening.
Good evening. So, does this?
It's up-down. Dennis, thank you.
There you go. Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman, and staff. My name is Walter Roach. I am the owner of 1000 and 1010 Vandestrial Drive. I purchased the property five years ago, and I am here with Ryan DeBari, our architect, and members of Mariani Landscaping, who are going to be working on our presentation this evening. 1000 and 1010 Vandestrial Drive is a 9,000-square-foot office building and a 9,000-square-foot warehouse. Mariani Landscaping has been at the property since 2009, almost 14 years. They occupy 50% of the office and 100% of the warehouse. Mariani Landscaping is a best-in-class landscaping company at the Westmont location, and they can speak to it. They employ approximately 45 to 50 employees, from landscapers to design staff dealing with hardscape and landscape. They have sales office, and they have regional project managers as well. As referenced, they've been at the property and a corporate resident in Westmont for 14 years. They are currently seeking another extension on their lease, and that is why we are before you tonight. We are seeking a reclassification of our property from M to M1 so that they could simultaneously put a special use permit in place to allow for some outdoor seasonal landscaping materials to help and aid in their business. As referenced, I'm here to answer any questions. We, as a team, we look forward to presenting to you, and thank you for your consideration.
Certainly.
I'll introduce Ryan DeBari, who is with IDG Design Firm.
Good evening. As Wally said, I'm Ryan DeBari with the Interior Design Group. I've been working with Wally on this property for a while. Just briefly, just reiterate that we are requesting the change from M to M1 so that we can go for the special use to allow the outdoor storage. This is the existing plan. The proposed plan is to, the special use again for the outdoor storage, the operations, the important part about this whole thing is the operations that exist today will not be changing, even as a part of this special use. They currently store some landscape materials out there in flowers, seasonal flowers, and things like that. So part of the special use is to provide this canopy structure to keep some of the landscape materials out of the sun and rain, to keep it dry, as well as an accessory canopy structure to protect flowers and when they receive materials, plants, flowers, before they get delivered to their various job sites, to keep them out of the sun, again, to preserve them in their best quality before they get delivered. As far as the standards for the special use, they're all being met mainly because everything is not changing as it is today. The entire property is, everything that we're requesting is happening within the storage, the yard. And as you can see from these three photos, the entire yard storage area is completely screened on all sides with an opaque fence. It does have a gate to close off the entry. Entry egress will not change. One of the important things is the traffic pattern will not change or be increased by the special use. Again, their normal operations will continue as they do today. So we feel like everything that they are proposing to do will not have a negative effect on any of the surrounding properties, as it will all be contained within this enclosed yard, as it does today. And I think that covers mine. Anyone else? Thank you.
All right. Staff comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to break this down to the two requests that are before us. So as the petitioner's indicated, this is an operating business. So although one of the two requests is a special use, and many of those that come before us are for a new business, this is actually for an existing business. So what began here was there is a business that's been operating here for 12 years. The property has an office building on it, a warehouse, and an outdoor yard area. The petitioner came in with the request to do two, what I'm going to call structures, but basically, one is a canvas canopy over their mulch area to keep it from getting wet, and then some seasonal shade structures, because they bring plants to the property before they put them on trucks and then go distribute them and go plant them. And what that constitutes for us is a change of use or an expansion of use. And when you look at the current zoning district for M District, it doesn't fit in well with that. However, it was in approximately 2020 that we introduced what was called the M1 District. So M District is M Manufacturing District, M1 is Limited Manufacturing District. And it was created specifically for the properties along Burlington and Quincy here that were more railroad-industrial but are budding residential properties. So the list of uses in the M1 District are much more limited. I think that M District uses in general can be considered more intensive, more offensive, because they are manufacturing and industrial uses. However, the M1 District is more limited in what those uses can be. So the first question is, is it appropriate to rezone this property from M Manufacturing to M1 Limited Manufacturing? The second is, in that M1 District, one of the things that can be requested is a special use for the outdoor storage, outdoor yard activities. So when we were approached with the request for these two structures, we indicated, well, a landscape contractor's office is a permitted use in either of these districts. However, if you want to expand the outdoor activities, then you need to secure a special use in the most appropriate district, for that would be M1, if you wanted to pursue this. So that is what is here before us, is that the existing business is looking to have the rezoning, which does affect the property in perpetuity for future uses if this user would go away. And then secure the special use for the activities that are occurring outside. And as they indicated, the business model is not changing. What it is, is they would like to cover the mulch to keep it from getting wet. They did make every effort to see if they could put it inside the building, but the fire department could not find a way to allow it, because the mulch is technically a combustible material. So they did try to first exhaust efforts to put it in the warehouse, but could not do it. It has been stored outside historically for quite some time, but it is an issue if it gets wet. So they want to be able to cover it, and then also have those outdoor plant structures out there as well. So those are the two requests that are before you. The advantage is that whereas right now, what the village has on all the properties on Vandestrial is just code enforcement powers, when something becomes excessive. So there are a lot of uses on Vandestrial that have auto repair and such, and that kind of spills out onto Vandestrial, and that's a code enforcement issue. In this case, because they are asking to secure the special use, that means we have control, and that means that they have to abide by the special use and any conditions that we may institute in that special use, which also means that we have the authority to, if they're not operating within that special use, the board has the ability to bring them back in, have them, you know, respond to why they're not doing that. And then a last-case scenario is terminate or revoke the special use. So it gives a lot more control in terms of the authority we have on the property itself. And as always, I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to come and address the commission? Good evening. Hi.
Hi. My name is Patty Desmond. I live at 328 Cromwell Court, which is directly across from the landscaping company. I've been there the last 28 years.
Is that to the north or to the west?
That would be to the north.
Okay, thank you.
The area, we're all over in the area right here.
Okay.
When I first moved in, that area was Swindler Construction Company. And I guess, you know, about 12 years ago, the landscaping company did come in. In 1996, hundreds of people came to this village hall to fight for BFI, because BFI tried to put a waste transfer station right there in that area, right across the street. And anyways, the village and all the trustees went in and put in a special use permit so we'd never have to deal with noxious smells and things like that. Fast forward to when the landscaping company came in, they didn't file the special use permit and started dumping grass there and letting it sit and rot. If you go and look, there's a history of complaints from our residents complaining all the time. It was so bad that I cannot open my windows, I could not sit on my patio, I could not have my patio door open because of the noxious smells.
When was this?
This has been for the last, well, it stopped the last two years, and I'll go into the history of that, but it was for the past 10 to 12 years. What they didn't tell you, and I don't know if we can, can you guys see that?
Yeah, there it is.
What they didn't tell you is that they're storing grass there before, and they'd let it sit there for days. And it would sit in puddles. There's no drainage back there. And it would just sit and rot, and we would call-
Would this be in the southwest corner? I don't recognize the wall there.
If we go back, I don't know if we can have that come back up. I have a better picture, so you can see that. Oh, there's a picture. It was sent right here, across, directly across from us, right in here. To give you another example, this is from my backyard, so you can see, there are two dumpsters right across the street from our backyard. They have a parking lot, they have the fence, but they have two dumpsters. And between those two dumpsters, they dump the grass. And they would just let it sit there and rot in puddles. And we would call and complain. We called the previous owner, we called the village, the village would go out. They would talk to them, things would get better, they would tell them that it's sitting in water, and they can't let it sit in water. And we reminded them that we thought there was a special use permit put on, and they said, no, no. Two years ago, there was a new zoning person that came in and came over when we made a complaint. He said, I looked at all your complaints, and I just researched this, and they don't have the right to do that there. They don't have the special permit. So at that time, he told them, you cannot store grass. If you bring grass in from all your trucks, at night, you have to dump it and put it in the dumpsters. And they didn't do that. In fact, if you go look, they were warned several times, and you guys had to take them to court. And finally, after taking them to court, they finally obeyed, and they started, for the last two years, every night, they'd have a front loader that dumps all the grass into dumpsters, and they're supposed to take it away. Most of the time, they do. Usually, on a Friday night, they don't. It sits there all weekend. But usually, they're good about covering it. But before that, what our biggest concern is, if you guys give them this special permit to do this, we're going to end up back into where we were before, where we could not sit out in our backyard. We could not enjoy sitting out there, we could not open our windows. And that's not fair. There has to be, right now, it's a win-win situation. They have to put the grass away. They were storing manure out there, too, and it was horrendous. They haven't stored the manure in two years out there. And again, I have a lot of different pictures of them storing things. There were different times. They had, they even put up one of those tents before, and then it blew down, and they left it like that for a long time. So they really didn't care about their neighbors. Other times, every time it smelled, I would go over there on the weekend, and there it was, a bunch of grass sitting there. So these are all from different times. So it was always like that. So we're asking that you guys do not grant the special permit. What they have in place now, you know, that we keep what's in place, so it's a win-win for both of us. We get to enjoy our outside, and they can still function as a landscaper company and keep within the restraints that they have, which is to remove all their grass clippings and not have them anywhere out there. So we'd appreciate it. And I'd also ask you, before you vote, come stand at my backyard so you can see how close it is to those dumpsters and across from the apartments, because their pictures make it look like it's hundreds of feet away when it is not. So I just ask you to please consider, and, you know, please keep some of the constraints so that we can live, too. I mean, we pay taxes, too, so we should be allowed to live and enjoy our own backyards. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to hear a response to these complaints.
Well, I think there's more, isn't there? Is there more?
Well, okay. We'll keep the public. Who else in the public would like to speak? Thank you.
This has to do with grass clippings. This isn't going to change anything.
Hi, my name is Penny Ware. I also live in Carlton Court. I'm also here as part of the Carlton Court Homeowners Association and also a homeowner. I live, this is a map that I got, and so the house is all to this side. That's all of one set of Carlton Court, of 177 homes. Affected directly from that parking where they're going to be storing is approximately 15 homes that are going, that are having to live with this smell. The mulch has dust when they start moving it around. There are a lot of seniors that are also living in that area that are dealing with health issues, COPD, breathing issues, and so having those, the mulch dust, the mold spores, and the smells. The landscaping that Patty was talking about, those piles are always kept like right in here. And yes, they have their white fence around it, and if you're on ground level, you cannot see it. But all of our townhomes are two-story, and we look right down into it. And so we see the mess that's in that storage area on a daily basis. If they weren't storing the mulch this past two years in the building in the warehouse, when somebody said that they couldn't, they weren't allowed to do, store the mulch there, I don't know where they were storing it, but the smells weren't as bad these past two years that the village has then made them uphold to not storing it outside. We complain, probably this past couple of years, we've still had to complain, because for some reason, the dumpsters weren't picked up, or maybe their bobcat guy wasn't around to move the yard waste, and it was sitting out there. But there still is, on record, that there are calls this year that we had complained about the smells. And it always seems like it's right on a weekend, it's right on a holiday, and it's like, you can't even enjoy, you can't open your windows. Patty lives in this unit, I live in this unit, we're right here. We can't be out on our patio. We can't be, we can't have our windows open. There are others that weren't able to come tonight because of COVID, but they're also, you know, right there and complaining about, we'd like to be able to open our windows, especially in the summer months or in the nice, when it's springtime. And you can't, you just can't do it when you're living right on top of mulch and yard waste that's sitting there for days. And so I would also like for you to think about that, you know, there's more than just one company. I have 177 homes in Carlton Court. All of them aren't as close as that picture right there, but those people right there in that picture are very close to that storage unit or the storage area where they want to start storing this stuff. So I would also appreciate you guys thinking about that. And again, like Patty said, come stand in our backyard to see how close you are to where they want to store this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Sterdic, and I'm one of the seniors in one of those pictures, fortunately not one with COPD. I'm not right on top of the property that we're talking about. However, I'm here to lend support and also, let's see, I'm this home, yeah, right there. Anyway, I guess I just need to reflect on what I'm hearing, and that is, you know, oftentimes in corporations, we sometimes hear the term "mission creep." Well, I think what we've heard is evidence of creep of the permission that was given and then liberties that were taken. And I'm not certain that there's evidence of the fact that it's been under control. Again, I'm not right on the property, but I'm very concerned about mulch. For example, we all know about its potential combustibility. However, there's also some toxicity involved. And I think that the fact that, yes, we have mulch sometimes on our property, but if you look at our siding and the spores that come into the air, Davy is our tree service and talked about, I can't, I couldn't think of the name of the condition that happens, but there's these little spores that come on the white siding that can't be cleaned off even with power washing. I just would urge us to really consider this carefully, because again, there's a history here that I believe has to be looked at carefully, and obviously, there's evidence of that. So I thank you for your kind attention for my neighbors and myself and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to confirm, you did sign in?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Joe, would it be appropriate to have the applicant?
I think, so Steph, I cannot speak to the past code enforcement issues. I can speak that there are no current violations that are occurring there. I do know that, yes, there were the, two years ago, I think there was a rash of the smells and things occurring there. My understanding was that, working with code enforcement, they did find a remedy, which I think there's now an enclosed dumpster that's there. But my understanding is that there is not a current violation that's occurring there. But I would encourage you to ask the business owner to come up and speak to that.
Ryan and I can-
Good evening, and I appreciate the comments and the concerns from the neighbors next door. I think relative to a few of the photographs, in 2020, September of 2020, was the violation that we first received. And to my knowledge, the only violation that we'd received, and that's when the structure that was there was taken down. So this was the prior structure that was there shielding the mulch, and the product is coming in, and Ryan can speak to it far better than I. But in some of those photographs, you could see the prior canopy. So I think those might have been from a while ago, not recently.
Wally, I just want to please speak to the microphones. I know you're trying to be respectful to the folks at Kane, but they can't record you if you turn around and speak to them.
Understood. Thank you. So I think the photographs that may have been presented may have been from prior to 2020. Since then, I think Mariani has made a concerted effort to remove the landscaping materials, and they can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. I'm Nate Birch. I'm the senior vice president at Mariani Landscape. I have been with the company for over 10 years. Started as a landscape architect, now I'm in a managerial position.
And you've signed in, sir?
I have. Yes, I am. Again, really appreciate the concerns of the residents in the area. I think that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, is we want to come to an agreement as a group, that we want to be good members of the community and a good neighbor in the area. And that's- neighbor in the area. And that's why we want to come here totally transparent with what our plan is to help keep their concerns at the forefront of our operation. And it's been discussed about, there was a photo that was shown earlier with the grass clippings piled up. That's an old practice. In this photo, or on the bottom left of the screen, you'll see a large green dumpster. With that dumpster comes a covering that we put on every night now to help control those smells. We are hauling that dumpster away two to three times a week all season long to help just try to keep that wet grass, which is really what smells the most, freshly taken away from the property so it doesn't linger there and create those issues. There was also a comment that there were some complaints that came in this year. That would be news to us. We've really tried hard over the last couple of years, again, to be a good steward of the community, do what was right, and be a good neighbor. Moving forward, the shade structure, the top right of the screen, very low, very seasonal modular type of thing, just to help protect some of our delicate flowers that we install for the community, just out of the direct sunlight. It just helps protect our product. And again, to Wally's point, we do consider ourselves best in class. So our product that we deliver to our clientele, we want it to be top-notch, and that's where that little piece of shade structure really helps us out. Again, we take that down, it's a seasonal thing, very similar to what you might see at a Jewel-Osco parking lot or something like that. The middle picture on the left side of the screen is the enclosure that ultimately does help keep that material dry and out of the elements. It's also going to help really cut down on that odor. It's been discussed, yes, the last two years, we have been storing our leaf compost mulch. It's not manure, it's leaf compost. We actually take leaf from the properties that we maintain, and we grind them up in the off-season, and it's really good for plant material and putting in beds on our clients' properties. So we take that recycled material, and we've been storing it inside for the last two years. And that has obviously cut down on a lot of the odors. I think that you've already heard from the residents that the last two years have gotten better, and it's because of that, that process. That's the exact same process that that covering offers. It's an enclosure. We can keep that smell and that odor down. Again, it's a seasonal thing. This is not going to be a 12-month-a-year product that we're putting out. There's a big push in April and May. After that, it subsides substantially, and we don't really use that much leaf mulch later on in the season. Pulverized topsoil, shredded hardwood mulch, those have very little to no odors, and those should not be an issue. So the two things that are causing some concern are the grass clippings and the leaf mulch. And our proposal here, we feel very confident tackles both those problems. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think the only other clarification that I'd like to make is what the residents brought up in terms of enforcement, that is standard code enforcement practice. This request does not negate code enforcement. What it does is it adds an extra layer. If you approve the special use, that you can set additional conditions that may be above and beyond code enforcement. Because obviously, code enforcement is when there's a problem, and then they establish it's a violation, then they, they have the authority to do something about it. Special use, you could set other terms, such as they mentioned two to three times a week. You could set a thing that said, no, every two days, we want it gone. And then that would be, become a condition of the special use. So what it does is it adds an additional layer of authority. And John can correct me if I'm saying anything inappropriate there.
No, you're correct. And as you guys know, it's common to impose special conditions on a special use approval. Adds a little more teeth to, or additional weight to address concerns that you or the public may have about a particular use. In this case, I've started jotting down a couple, which I'm happy to read to you to consider. Perhaps the applicant can address whether he, or they believe it's feasible. But the first would be, grass clippings, leaf waste, and other organic waste shall be stored in dumpsters. The dumpsters shall be covered at all times. The dumpsters shall be hauled away from the property minimum two to three times a week, and you can work on that language as you feel is necessary. And then the last one I had was, leaf compost shall be stored in a completely enclosed building. I don't know if you move it out at any, I missed if you said if, during a portion of the season, you move it outside and store it outside?
Well, in certain times of the year, we don't need to use it at all. And so in the spring is when we're moving in and out that mulch, so we'll get deliveries, it will drop. In the last two years, we've just been pushing it inside the building. In our proposal here, we want to push it just inside this little hoop house structure.
I'm sorry. Maybe I'm confused between the mulch, which I understand would be stored in the hoop structure, versus you mentioned leaf composting that you do on-site in an enclosed building.
You don't do the composting on-site. That it's done in our other facility in Lake Bluff.
Okay. Yeah, because the mulch you can't store inside, I think for fire hazard reasons.
Correct, correct. And I wanted to take a step further, and I don't know if this is correct protocol, but I have the authority to, again, the concerns of the residents on the north side. I'm willing to install trees, do plantings and screenings, evergreens, deciduous trees, to help block some of that visual and some of that wind that's crossing there as, again, a good neighbor for the community to be able to work well with our neighbors.
Ed, I would like for you to confirm that, Joe, you mentioned that this is not an expansion of your outdoor uses. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's a modification is the best way to describe it. And so we can't allow a modification of what's happening there. It's, it doesn't mean that what they're doing there can't stay occurring, because they've been there for, for years and they've been doing the use. It's because they want to add these structures that gives us the authority to say, oh, you're modifying the way you're using this outdoor space. The current code doesn't allow this modification. However, this other zoning district, which is technically more restrictive, can allow it as a special use, and that special use then gives us authority to set conditions. So.
And I'd just follow up with my comments and Joe's comments about these special conditions. In the ordinance, it would state that upon, usually it says, upon three violations in a rolling calendar year, would give grounds for the village board to hold a hearing with notice to the applicant on possibly revoking the special use, in addition to taking any other remedies available to it at law. So if there's a violation of the special conditions, the village could bring in Mariani's for administrative adjudication and issue fines. It could go to the circuit court for injunctive relief, or it could hold a hearing after, let's say, three violations in a rolling 12-month period to possibly revoke the special use.
And I believe that's more authority than just the typical code enforcement procedures now.
It is.
Okay.
And also, if I'm right, the testimony was that the smell, the odor concerns have gotten better in the last two years when the organic waste products like grass clippings have been placed inside a dumpster?
And again, just to clarify off of that, the, the, the new outdoor facility that you're proposing, you are also talking about no longer putting that leaf waste inside, but keeping it in that open enclosure, different than being in the interior closure?
Right. We can no longer keep it inside because of the fire code issues that it poses. To us, this enclosure has a top, backside, and we can roll a tarp down over the front as well, so it can keep it enclosed.
But just, I just want to clarify that, because it seemed like there was a little confusion on those.
Now, it is, it is, I think, what you would consider a temporary structure. It's got large block on the side. It has the, you know, the truss structure over the top. We would keep it there year-round, but I don't believe it's considered a permanent structure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
From the public, yes?
And from their drying, and I don't know that we would necessarily have a problem with them storing plants, trees, flowers, until they get planted. It's the ideal of the mulch, and the grass clippings, the container is not closed. And yes, they do only have the majority of that mulch out there in the spring and early into the summer. And guess what? That's when Memorial Day weekend is. That's when you first get to open your windows and enjoy the fresh air outside from the long winter that we have. And you can't, because that smell is out there. I don't have a problem with them with plantings. I have a problem with the mulch and this grass. And that dome container over there, they did put that up originally, and the tarp blew off, ripped off, and they left it there like that until the village made them take it down. So it was an eyesore for all of us, seeing that was all ripped up, and they didn't do anything about it until the village made them take it down. But I don't have a problem with the grass clipping, or with the plants. I don't, what I have a problem with is, and they have, they have been storing something inside a building for the past two years.
Can't do it anymore.
I'm sorry?
They can't do that anymore.
They can't do that anymore?
Spontaneous combustion on the mulch.
But I thought you said it was a leaf?
Well, if, whatever it is, what, if it's, if it's organic material, it's spontaneous combustion is going to take place if it's stored inside. And I'm sure that's why the fire department has said you can't store it inside.
Okay. So then can they not take it from wherever they're doing it, processing it from another location, and deliver it to their customers then? And they're not planting the plantings to the community, they're planting it to their customers, not to the community. Again, I just really want everybody to think about the homeowners that are just to the north of them and is having to deal with. The past two years have not been bad, because the village made a recommendation for them to make a change. And it's been okay. But if you let them go back, I can guarantee you, you're going to have a lot of homeowners complaining about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more thing. And to that, I, we don't want to go backwards. We want to go forwards. And we want to do what's right, and we want to control the smells. As we, you have heard now for the last two years, we have been able to successfully do that. This is just allowing us to take another step further and, and continue so that our operation can run efficiently. And we take the concerns very seriously. And our goal is to maintain what we've had over the last two years through this program as well.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, let's move to the commissioners. Commissioner Barry?
Thank you, Doug. I thought this was going to be the easiest night we had, and now you guys have made it a little difficult for us. But I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate all the comments. And I'm very familiar with Van Dustry Drive. I'm very familiar with, with that whole area. And I'm also very familiar with code enforcement. And that area of Van Dustry, Zigmund Circle, really lacks code enforcement. And one of the things I've appreciated about your business is how well you guys keep it there. And I've, I've always noticed that, how well it's kept and, and how the trucks are kept and that sort of thing. So I thought that this was almost like a waste of time. I said, why, why are we bothering these guys when there's such a pigsty two doors down that seems like they put structures up all over? But then to hear from the residents, and to hear these concerns of, of the smell and, and, you know, being out there and, and having this, it's really got me in a quandary as far as, you know, the smells and, you know, the idea that it's combustive to be interior means it's combustive to be out, you know, outside in those piles also. So I think that that's going to be a reoccurring problem, is that, is that leaf waste mulch. I think that there's some ways to work with the grass clippings. You know, again, I go back to the two years, they're saying they're covered, and there's some, some things there that we could put some muscle to. I really like the idea of landscaping and cutting that off for you guys, so you wouldn't see any more of that, or dumpsters, or whatever businesses would come in there in the future. I like that idea of, of you guys looking at landscaping versus the fence. But I have concerns with, with putting those things in there and then leaving it up to code enforcement for you guys, because I've seen a real lack of that. And, and it seems like you guys have been complaining and complaining, and, you know, that doesn't necessarily always get the problem fixed. It gets you recognized, but it doesn't always get the problems fixed. So I'm a little torn. I'm interested to hear what my other commissioners have to say and where everyone stands. But I think there would have to be a lot of language in there for me to be a yes on it, as John has indicated, for, to protect the residents around there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skales?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation and for the commentary tonight. I have a couple of quick questions. One is for staff. You talked about the zoning changing, I think you mentioned in perpetuity, but in the event that use was gone, and another user came in and needed to rezone back to regular manufacturing district, is still possible, correct?
Well, it, so if, if what the request is tonight is to zone down one, that zoning wouldn't change if this user left. What would expire would be the special use for this user, unless there are certain terms of expiration of a special use that if an exact user, just like that, can move in within a certain time period, then they don't necessarily have to get a new special use approved. But in general, when this user leaves, that special use kind of goes away with it. So if some other user wanted to use this outdoor space, they would need to come in for a special use for their use, because the, the outdoor use, special use permit in the M1 is very specific.
Right, and also limiting, correct?
Yes, and limiting.
And that was my, kind of more my question.
Now, what you also said is, well, if, could it be rezoned back to M? So the, this area is kind of a little island of manufacturing district, and then housing was built around it. So there are lots of things that you can do in a manufacturing district that are dirty and smelly, and, and there are rules and regulations when the smells get offensive, or when, you know, the, the uses get offensive where code enforcement gets involved. It doesn't necessarily say that no smells can be admitted. It says that when they become offensive. The M1 takes the list of uses that could be there and really kind of brings it into a much shorter list that was a district that was designed more for uses that are more compatible next to residential districts. So I would think that if this user, if it was rezoned M1, and then this user left, that there might be resistance to wanting to rezone it back to M, and then open up the door to a lot of more offensive users that could be there.
That answers my question. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. This is one is for the applicant, or a couple for the applicant. So my understanding is there's mulch, there's leaf waste, and there's grass clippings. Is that correct?
And there are plants.
Well, I'm just concerned, not the plants necessarily I'm asking about.
Yeah, so most of the waste that you'll have in the spring and through the summer will be the grass clippings. That's obviously where we mow, we bag it, we bring it back. And again, we're hauling it out on a frequent basis, covering it at night. Then in the fall, you've got leaf debris that's coming back. That's the predominant thing that would be coming in right now. And that usually wraps up right around Thanksgiving. And then you don't have anything coming or going, you know, until basically the middle of April. Leaf mulch is a product, so there's refuse debris, those are the two things, leaf debris and grass clippings. And then the materials that are coming out, coming in and coming out, I should say, would be your, your leaf mulch, and that's the one that, that does have the most odor to it. It's also the one that we use the most, because it works the best. The plants, I don't think that's an issue with anybody. That obviously comes and goes in a frequent basis as well.
So it's not the same kind of mulch that I buy at Home Depot in bags? It's something different?
No, you could, I'm pretty sure you can get some leaf mulch in Home Depot bags, but.
You're not storing that kind of mulch on-site?
Well, we will have some shredded hardwood, and that's. Well, we will have some shredded hardwood, and that's what it is. It's real hardwood that's shredded up, and that generally goes in commercial parking lots and things like that. Leaf mulch is really good for perennial gardens, and again, we do a lot of high-end perennial gardening throughout the southwest suburbs. So it's not just Westmont, it's the whole, all surrounding communities.
And you guys have been there for 12 years?
Yes.
So I like the idea, and thank you for offering up the installation of the trees on the north side, the deciduous makes sense, and I like the idea of additional conditions, John, that you mentioned too. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, first, I'm going to have questions for the applicant, so.
Yeah.
First thing is, that there was some testimony tonight about legal action against this particular user. Was that, is that actually true, John?
Not by the village.
Not by the village, okay.
I think if you're talking to a comment...
That's what the testimony was.
Oh, I think he was talking, maybe talking about years ago, that there may have been, or maybe a member of the public...
We're fully aware several years ago there were complaints, and that is why we took the actions that we did to try to appease, and again, just be a good neighbor. And so that's when the mulch, the leaf mulch specifically started going inside the warehouse, and we started rolling the grass clippings out on a frequent basis through the dumpster.
I think part of the discomfort amongst my fellow commissioners so far has been the conflicting testimony, and I think it's all related to the timeline of when all of this happened, because some of these complaints were years ago, and had been addressed, and you've made some improvements to address those issues, and then I hear from staff that there hasn't been any new complaints, correct, Joe?
I can't verify that there haven't been complaints, because there's a difference between a complaint and a violation.
But, okay.
It's, all I can state is that they're not in current violation with our code enforcement division.
Okay. So, you know, that's really where we're at, is that we hear different things, and some of the pictures were years ago, you're not handling the situation like that anymore. And then also, you know, I sit back and I listen to the testimony, which I appreciate everyone's testimony, and we have to consider all of the testimony when we render a decision. I had to sit back and think, well, the reason why it's wet, it smells, is because it gets wet, and your special use is to provide a covering so it doesn't get wet, is that correct?
Correct.
So this is really all about you addressing the concerns as part of your special use? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I also have to ask, there's obviously more, pardon me because of my background, I am a technical guy, so there is the ability to monitor these things electronically. So you know when the odor is bad, and you know when to address that. Are you willing to consider any of those options?
I say absolutely, yes.
So...
So basically, it monitors odors in the air, and if it gets to a certain limit, then we could pivot and make some moves there.
So you would then know it, and then you could be able to address that in advance of all the complaints, in advance of code enforcement and anything like that, that, like, for example, I'll give you an example, that we have different air quality monitoring that happens in and around treatment plants. We have air quality monitoring in and around other facilities like yours. And they're really inexpensive, but they're something that could actually put a threshold together over what is acceptable and what isn't. And I think working together as a community, working together as a business, working together with the residents, I think we could come up with something that, hey, that, hey, here's our threshold, and then we take action, or different action, to address that, and some of those are going to be part of our recommendations. But if you don't have any problem, you don't have any problem with any one of the additional criteria that Mr. Zeminek had proposed?
Well, I mean, we are looking at a long-term lease for the property.
How long?
Part of that decision process is the ability to operate our business as we need to. We'd have to take a look at the language, but we're open to play ball. So I think everything that's been suggested tonight has valid logic, and we'll entertain it, yes.
Well, I also think that, looking at your site, looking at this application, the prevailing wind is from the south and southwest, right? I mean, it's something that, and this neighborhood that has concerns is in that basic direction from your facility. And so when they get that prevailing wind in the spring and in the fall, that is blowing the odor in that direction. So that's really where, what the issue is, and if somehow that could be contained, I know that the cement blocks that are really retaining walls above ground to hold material, if there's a way to prevent the wind from hitting this material, that that would be recommended. Would you have the kind of problem with some sort of wind break there? I see the roof, see, when you look at that picture, the wind is going to go right through that. And if the wind does not pick up that odor from wherever you're storing it, it's not going to get to the neighborhood. So I just think that there's some little things that could be done, and if you're willing to do those, we're happy to hear that. But I think part of the testimony tonight is the conflict between when these complaints happened, when improvements were made, and that the special use would have that criteria. If you don't have any problem with that, I would think that, I think the issues have been mitigated correctly. With that, I don't want any further questions.
I wanted to clarify just one point if I could. I talked about leaf compost, which we turns into mulch, that does not happen on this property. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. That leaf debris that we're picking up now, it gets hauled out, just like the grass clippings, it's taken to another facility in Lake Bluff where that is turned into leaf mulch. So that, it's, in this facility at 1,000 Van Dushtal, its material's coming and going when it's in that time of the season.
And the leaf mulch would be kept within the concrete?
Correct.
Blocks and under the hoop tent?
Correct. It's still offloaded, so the way, and again, we've heard tonight that the last two years have been much, much better, we're still having to offload that leaf mulch from a semi into our parking lot, and then move it into the warehouse. So even that shuttling of material, which is the only thing that we're going to be doing here, that's, it still hasn't created that big of a problem in the last two years. So that's why we feel very confident that this can work.
But the mulch is just going to be sitting there?
No, the mulch, it basically goes out about as fast as it comes in. We just take a large delivery about once a week, and then it's shuttled out with our smaller dump trucks throughout the week.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I've gotten a lot of information already, but this woman says that the grass clippings are not covered, and you guys are saying they're covered, so are they covered or are they not covered?
My name is speaking about, mine is our operations manager of the facility, he's there on a daily basis.
And I'm getting the information from you guys that it's covered, but, so I'm not sure why it's conflicting that she's saying it's not covered.
Well, I guess, to me, if it's not been an issue, and there's no complaints in the last few years that we have been made aware of, that the hauling out on a consistent basis plus the covering is what has contributed to us not having those problems in the last two years.
So at the end of every day, that dumpster is covered?
Yes, that's correct. There's a big tarp that rolls over it, and it just kind of seals it off.
And that...
For me, you're letting them talk, but you're not letting us answer to their conversation, so.
In charge. Okay, all right.
On a Friday, they do.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Occasionally on a Friday, they do cover it, but not during the week, and not every Friday, not consistently.
I guess a question as we consider special conditions, and the fact that the leaf mulch has to be stored within the concrete block barrier and underneath the hoop tent, there is going to be an exception during loading and unloading, where it's going to be removed from a semi truck and into the outdoor storage area, and then I assume through Bobcats or other devices moved into the hoop tent area. What's the longest, and you might want to stay up here in case other questions come up, but what I'd like to do is put a time limit for how long that leaf mulch can, once unloaded from a semi truck, can remain outside before it has to be moved into the hoop tent area and covered.
Yeah, it would be almost simultaneously, because, again, we want to protect that product from hanging out there, or getting wet and things like that. And as part of the special use permit, I'm sure there could be some language about timeline on there that we would accept, because our goal is to move it in there as soon as it gets dropped off.
What is that timeline? And, you know, I, we also, I think, want to be fair to a business, where if an employee is unavailable for some reason, who normally would do that, you know, what's a reasonable time period? Is it one hour, is it four hours where it can sit outside before it has to get moved within these concrete blocks? Just so we don't have a neighbor calling up saying, it's been sitting out here for eight hours, it's supposed to be stored in, at least within the concrete blocks and under the hoop tent.
What's a, to your point, what's a reasonable time before an odor starts to emit from leaf mulch that's been sitting out in the open?
Well, I mean, it's, to be honest, it's going to have odor as soon as it hits the ground. It's just a matter of how long is it going to take to travel to where it can be offensive to somebody. I think through moving it quickly into this structure, adding vegetation to block that wind, and provide some visual barriers as well, I think would really mitigate any of that. And I think just being really conscious about how much we bring in, only what we need, and moving it in and out as quickly as possible. Not only in and out of the structure, but off property and onto our clients' properties.
Commissioner Lavoy raised a point about within the hoop tent, you've got the concrete blocks that go up to a certain level, but then it's open on one side, and I imagine open on the other side where wind can pass through.
No, this would be blocked on the backside.
It is blocked on the backside.
So the north side is closed.
Yeah, and I believe there can be a tarp on the front side, so that in the evenings or over the weekend, we can zip it down and...
I would question to staff then, would that not create the same fire hazard that it would interior, if it becomes sealed up again inside that shed? I mean, I, just questioning that to staff or to the fire department, because if the concern of storing it inside is that it's combustible, and then all of a sudden we seal it back up, does it become combustible in that sealed shed?
And I don't know, I can't answer the fire department's question.
So I think that would be the thing with putting that provision on sealing up the four walls of it versus...
But maybe three walls would be...
Well, it already is proposed as three.
Yeah. I think three walls would, you know, to block the wind from carrying that odor off the property in a direction that addresses that prevailing wind would really go a long way to helping you.
Agreed. Commissioner Peterson, you have?
Well, I'm still confused about the grass clippings, you know, I don't know, who do you believe? You know, one says that they're covered, the others said they're not covered, but and that's such a weird area of town anyway, it's, there's always, that M district has been there forever, and unfortunately, you know, there is residential there, but the residential, I believe, was built with the M district already in place, so sometimes you have to expect, you know, the unexpected of what's going to be there if it's a different There's a lot to think about, though. I'm glad that the last couple of years, things have gotten better, that you're more aware and taking care of things, so that's all I have.
And whether it was covered or uncovered, or sometimes covered or not, I think what the applicant is saying is that, except when loading and unloading into that dumpster, it's going to be, and a requirement that you can impose is that it be covered with a tarp or other lid.
Well, I would just assume that if it's covered at the end of the day, every day, that...
Well, how about throughout the day, unless they're loading it?
Well, then it can't be covered. I mean, you know, during the day, if there's numerous times people are going to dump, you know, numerous truckloads.
I imagine that the crews go out during the day, and then come in at the end of the day, and that's when they unload into the dumpster, and when the, so during the day, they can keep it covered, they take the cover off to load it at the end of the day, and then put the cover back on.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I don't know how kosher it is to keep going back and forth, but come on up to the stand, ma'am.
Just a very quick... I just want to point out, thinking about our logic here, yes, we're talking about the two years, but we're here because we're, they're asking for a change. You know, there were two years that were seeming to go well, but now we're looking at providing a kind of a different configuration, so to speak. So it's, the two years count, but what you're looking at, and I want to go back to my analogy, is making sure that we don't have some kind of creep again forward, that they will stick to what is said, or whatever, but I think that's an important logic to keep in mind. This is different.
Can you address that question? Is the changes, are the changes you intend to make going to increase the odors that...
Essentially, what we're asking for is what we've been doing the last two years. Instead of just pushing the mulch into the warehouse, we want to push it into this little enclosure. That's the only difference. Does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Maybe this is for staff, that would we be able to say, when we want to do the special use, specific times a week to be removed, the mulch be removed from the facility? Put it on a schedule?
I believe you can be as specific as you want, but I think that might be difficult because there's holidays, there's seasonal...
And that's not our business.
It's your business. There's seasonal things, and I think ultimately what we don't want to do is create something where then you're asking code enforcement staff to be out there every two days to see if it gets removed. So we have to, we have to create something that's specific enough that tries to prevent the conditions of affecting the neighbors, without getting so specific that they can't work within their operations.
They have to be able to breathe.
Within those parameters.
And do that. Okay, and when others, commissioners said something about a monitor system for the odors and that, that seems to be a great idea, and I don't even know what, how they exist, or even if they do exist, but I'd appreciate it if you looked into the matter, you know?
Yeah, certainly something, we have not considered that. A great idea, I would like to look into, look into that technology and see if it's something we could use, yes, agreed. But other than that, I cannot come up.
Right, right. We don't have that. We don't have monitors.
My only concern with the, I guess it's air quality odor monitors that you brought up, is whether we have a standard by which to measure it. We do have performance standards that are applicable to the M district and other zoning districts, including the M1 district. And it talks about smoke and particulate matter, which may, I don't know if that includes, but it probably could include dust and odor from mulch. but it probably could include dust and odor from mulch or grass clippings. The rate of emission of particular, particulate matter from all vents and stacks within the boundaries of any lot shall not exceed five, five tenths of a pound per acre of lot area per hour. And then suspended particulates carried across lot lines shall not exceed 25 micrograms per cubic meter averaged over a 24-hour period, you know? And these are quite old standards. I don't know if they're valid, but it's, it's hard to require...
It is.
...monitoring without having an established...
It is. I'll go even further, John, by saying that I think that a lion's share of our treatment plants do not have that type of monitoring.
We don't.
There you have it. Downers Grove Sanitary does not have that. But I thought that, you know, since these devices are portable in nature, that you can get these devices, that I wouldn't want to make it necessarily a requirement of the special use, but that would enable the applicant to monitor for himself. That way, we don't have to set these limitation standards, we don't have code enforcement issues, that it just might help them deal with their own problem. But no, I wouldn't be suggesting that we add that as part of criteria just for those reasons. We have no way to measure it. We have no way to set those thresholds. This is not something that's out there that's being used anywhere else. I just thought, you know, if I had, if I was a business owner, I'd be doing the same thing, that hey, if I could get a device to monitor this, it'd be interesting to see. And now I know where my threshold is and, you know, I'm a good neighbor, I'm going to take care of it. But I think that the windshield, the three-sided thing to address Commissioner Berry's issues, which are very valid, if you block the wind from, the prevailing winds from southwest to northeast, you're going to help yourself in the long run. I would, I would like to make that as part of the added requirement.
And it's enclosed on three sides?
Correct.
What about the planting of, I believe they said deciduous trees or shrubs along a portion of the north property line to provide screening and some odor protection?
That would also help.
I agree.
My only caution is there's not a lot of space there and it's right up against the street, and it might cause visibility issues. I know that the intersection of Van Industrial and 61st is, it's, the trees are overgrown. I just want to make sure that anything that we let them plant doesn't become an obstruction to turn the corner now at Williams and 61st.
So I guess we can say it's required if feasible and if it doesn't interfere with the line of sight triangle?
Yes.
Is that a four-way stop?
It is a four-way stop, I think so. And it's not a four-way stop on the Van Industrial side, you know, but it makes it hard to navigate. But trying to do, because really the best screening trees are your evergreens because deciduous, you know, fall in, but, but they also say that their activities diminish over the winter to nothing, so maybe that's okay if they're deciduous trees.
We can throw some evergreens in there too if it helps.
I think what, you're saying, would Ashley be over in your parking lot, Mr. Roach, on the backside of your...
I think it would be on the 1,000 Van Industrial side, which is already a bermed, raised lot, so that might help facilitate hiding.
I'm willing to do it on either side of the street. We can do it on Wally's property, on where we, our facility is, and we can also stagger some things on the other side of the street. Again, landscape design is trying to just block those, those areas out, and so you can put one on this side and one on this side, and in the end, you're blocking that line of sight.
Wouldn't it be on the southwest quadrant of 61st and Williams?
Yes.
On that L shape?
It'd be southwest corner, correct.
Yeah, I just want to interject. I don't think it would be appropriate, even though you're willing to install trees on the other side of the street, that's public right of way and that gets into our foresters' discretion, and so he very much controls all of that, so...
Understood.
I don't know if the opportunity exists, but I don't know how wide according to this drawing, but in between the parking lot and where like the fence line starts, I don't know if there would be an opportunity there to run...
I think it's very near, so you're talking about where you see those cars parked up against the fence?
I'm looking at the landscape plan.
Oh, okay, you're looking...
This photo shows it a little bit better.
It's, it's only, I think, maybe three feet at best, so I think at best you might be...
Looks pretty narrow there. I just was questioning if, if that would be an opportunity there to do like tall evergreens or something, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that it would work right along that fence line, but it would certainly work on that berm, which is in the very far northwest corner of Wally's property.
Of the property, of the subject property? Are you talking 61st and Williams, right, which would be the...
Yes.
Southeast quadrant of that intersection?
Correct.
I just don't know how much that helps in the northwest berm.
Okay, well, one more. You wanted to make a statement.
Okay. They're talking here. They're talking here.
No.
We made the comment about that, yes, in the past two years, it's been much better. That's because the mulch is not being kept outside. When the mulch, if they put the mulch back in their little canopy thing, how many trucks do they have to take the Bobcat in and out of that canopy thing to raise the stuff, to dump it in their trucks, and then to have it go poof, all in the air? And then they go back in and they grab another stack and they bring it back out and they dump it in their truck, and it goes poof, and it goes all the way back up there again? And so the reason why we haven't had that issue now is because where they're storing it is in this building. And so if they're, if they're loading trucks, they're in this area here, which is covered area, which is not in the wind tunnel. We get horrendous winds back here, like crazy. And so having this thing right over in here, and every time that they take their front loader and move it, take a scoop and dump it in their truck, it's going to go poof. I work next to Tamlins and I sit in my car, and my car has mulch dust all over it because of them moving the mulch around. I watch, when we talked about them being combustible, I watch the smoke coming out of the piles. I just don't see any difference. So what's made it different is we've not allowed them to have the mulch outside. By putting it even in this little canopy thing, they're still going to be outside. And it's not just the grass that's the issue, it's the mulch also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add a comment to that, though. We're already loading it outside, unloading and loading, because I cannot load trucks inside the warehouse. I can only push it in there. I have to take a skid steer, load it, bring it outside to then dump it in a truck that's outside. So again, the process, what we're asking to do is virtually the same, it's just putting it under a different enclosure.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, do you have anything else?
I'm done.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No, I think that both people have legitimate gripes and the business has to continue to run. And I think you've been on call tonight as to what the problems are, and hopefully what we're doing tonight here is giving us greater control and making the landscaper more aware of the problem and that if we can put enough teeth into this special use permit, I would be all for going for it.
Well, let's talk about what teeth we might add to...
Mr. Chair, before you do that, can I ask you one more question?
Certainly.
You know, one thing that's come up too is the proximity of the storage to the neighborhood. If you look at the, at that picture, you look at the south lot line, the large building that's off-site is a pretty high wall, and that would block the wind. If you looked operationally to store the mulch in that area and moved your parking that you put against that building up, that would go a long way without spending any money.
That's correct.
So is that an option?
Oh, we could look at potentially reconfiguring. The issue is there are two...
There's two doors there, yes.
...that allow to pull through currently. So you have to block one of those doors.
Yeah, I don't want to play Monday night quarterback with your designers, but I thought that, hey, that that wall would prevent that wind from picking up that odor. But anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry, John.
All right, thank you. So, John, could you delineate here any...
Special conditions?
Special conditions we, that the board might add to...
Sure, and these are things you can recommend for the board to consider. One would be grass clippings, leaf waste, and other organic waste material shall be stored in dumpsters. The dumpsters shall be covered at all times except when loading or unloading the dumpsters. The dumpsters shall be all the way from the property, we could say, two to three times per week. Next is leaf mulch or other mulch shall be stored within concrete blocks and covered by a hoop tent structure on three sides, except when loading and unloading. Leaf mulch or other mulch shall not be stored outdoors uncovered for more than a two-hour period. And then lastly was the applicant shall plant deciduous trees such as arborvitae on a portion of the north property line for screening and odor protection, provided such trees do not obstruct the line of sight triangle of any intersection or entrance.
John, I might sound stupid to landscapers, but you said deciduous and arborvitae, aren't arborvitae evergreens?
Yes.
And/or evergreen.
Okay.
So instead of deciduous, just say...
And/or evergreen.
Evergreen.
And/or evergreen.
Yeah.
Okay. Leave it up to staff.
Really, Commissioner Lavoy brings up the most logical point, is to move it to the other side of the parking lot, and it's 90 feet away, it's 90 feet further from the residence. I mean, that, to me, is one of the most logical things, and it, with all these provisions, and it puts it 90 feet farther away, takes away that wind concern. I mean, it's just a gravel unfinished lot at this point.
Except for the, well, doors.
The doors there, there's two garage doors there.
The only concern I'd raise is...
I've seen that on this, on this drawing, this site plan exhibit here.
The south of this corner of the lot, that's what...
But here, but if this is here, if this is on that corner of the lot, it's a long way from those doors. I mean, again, I'm not, as you said, playing Monday morning quarterback here, but that seems like it's a...
Well, the hoop structure would be open on the north side in that case.
But protected more so by the fence there, you know? But again, that...
Commissioner Berry, the only concern I'd raise is I don't know if it gets too close to that building to the south, if that becomes an issue in terms of setback.
The neighboring property.
I think we can only consider what's in front of us.
Yes, thank you.
I think we can only consider what's in front of us, and I think that we leave it up to the applicant to come with the best solution. We throw around ideas to make it better, but it's up to you.
Well, I would ask you, would you be willing to comply with these additional restrictions or conditions that the village attorney has...
They sound very reasonable. I would say most likely yes. I would just like to see it if we could and just digest it if that's an opportunity. Not sure what the protocol is. Is there, you know, a vote on this tonight? Is there a way to go back sort of a little bit to the drawing board? What are the, what would be the next steps, I guess, leaving that?
I'll try to answer that. This is a recommending body only, so this is the public hearing to gather information. This commission makes a recommendation, and then it will proceed to the village board for a vote by ordinance, whether to allow or disallow the special use. So this commission will have to vote tonight on these special conditions. But what we can do is place them in writing and send them to you so you have them in written form before this gets to the village board level. You can consider them. If you want to tweak the language or say we can't comply, then we'll report that to the village board.
It all sounds very reasonable, and I, I think we probably would be able to do it. I just would like the opportunity to consult with my team before I can make the final decision on that.
All right. Then I think that...
The first one is easy.
Yeah, I'm, let's, let's go ahead and Chair would entertain a motion to approve, one, a map amendment request to rezone from M manufacturing distant, District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. Do I have a motion? So move Van Buren?
Second, Scales.
Scales, second. Further questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Berry?
Present.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Chairman Kymichael? Yes. And second, a special use permit and associated site plan approval request for accessory outdoor storage for a landscape contractor's office in the M1 Limited Manufacturing District. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, is this where you add on the special conditions?
And to include the special conditions as listed by the village attorney.
If there's further discussion, I'll just make a comment that the suggestions that are made are not part, that your application is not part of a site plan approval or any kind of other approval other than special use. So where you put this on the site is not part of our decision-making. That's to my understanding, and that's, John, you would agree with that?
Where to place the hoop tent?
Yes.
Yeah, right now you have a proposal in front of you that you're making your recommendations on. Certainly the applicant can look into alternative locations, and I think that's on the record that you're suggesting that they consider whether there's another feasible location that would be farther away from those residences to the north.
Okay.
Mr. Zemanek, I'm not trying to disagree, but the requirement of the special use for outdoor activities or the, what they're doing requires a site plan approval embedded in the ordinance approval.
Okay.
So I don't know that there's flexibility that Commissioner Lavoy is saying.
Well, there's flexibility between the time, between tonight and when they get to the village board.
Okay.
And I guess that's what I was getting at.
Okay.
Not at some future...
But ultimately, there is a site plan that is adopted as part of the ordinance.
But that site plan approval is done by the village board, or not?
Yes, as part of the special use approval. And then if they were to make, wanted to make a change at some future date, let's say in a year or two or 10 from now, they'd have to come in for an amended site plan. It would technically be an amended special use and site plan if they wanted to add something or move something around.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Okay, that was a motion, okay.
Yes.
Who's the...
No, I'm sorry. What are the ones that we're adding to special conditions? We're adding installation of arborvitae or...
Evergreen.
Or similar?
Yep.
Specifically on the north part of the property?
Correct.
We're adding closed dumpsters for leaf waste and grass clippings?
Correct.
We're adding that they must, it must be removed two, three times per week?
Correct.
Is that it?
And that leaf mulch or other mulch has to be stored within the hoop tent with concrete blocks enclosed on three sides.
Okay.
And then the third, I guess the final one was, and that would be except for when they're loading and unloading, the leaf mulch or other mulch material. And when it's unloaded from a semi truck, it can't sit outside in the parking area exposed for more than two hours before it's moved into the hoop.
Right.
Attorney Zemanek, do you also have to amend it to include that, three violations in a 12-month period?
Oh, that's part of...
Okay, I didn't know if you needed to add that to the list.
That will be part, the enforcement mechanism will be part of the ordinance, but I didn't read it off here.
And how are we determining two hours of sitting outside?
Basically, if a complaint comes in, then village staff would have to... Basically, if a complaint comes in, then village staff would have to sit there and monitor it moving forward.
Okay. I just wonder if that's reasonable.
It's difficult to monitor, but in other cases, we have had staff sit outside property and observe it for a particular period of time to see if a violation exists.
Could it be potentially two hours unattended, so that they dump it and leave it there and no one's doing anything with it?
That's probably a better clarification.
Okay.
I did have a quick question on the three violations in the year. I know you were going to add some language regarding that. What is the difference between the complaint and the violation? A complaint would come in from somebody within the community. A violation would be then after somebody from the village comes out and says, this is a problem.
And observes that a violation has occurred. It doesn't mean that you've gone to administrative adjudication and been adjudicated as liable for that violation. It means that the, a village staff member has gone out and observed the violation and has given you notice and has given you an opportunity to cure it. So that if village staff is out there because of complaints every single week and giving you notice after notice after notice, and nothing's being done about it, the village wants the ability to either take you to administrative adjudication or, in extreme circumstances, even consider, considering revoking this special use. But that would only be done after notice to you, an opportunity to be heard, so you and whatever representatives could speak to the village board, present your side of the issue, and the board could consider whether to take action or not.
Thank you.
Repeating, under the second motion, the chair will accept a motion to approve special use permit and associated site plan approval request for accessory outdoor storage for a landscape contractor's office in the M1 Limited Manufacturing District as amended by the additional conditions.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Scales.
Motion Lavoy, second. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Present.
And, that's it, Chairman Kymichael.
Yes. So, there you have it, gentlemen, and for the, you ladies from the public, we worked hard to accommodate. I hope that you can accept the compromise here, and you'll be notified by staff when you'll be appearing before the village board.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I will contact you tomorrow about how you want to proceed, if you want to proceed to the next village board, or if you want a little time to, you said you wanted to talk it over with your team, so I'll contact you tomorrow to see how that, how you want to, which board you eventually want to get advanced to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item under new business, public hearing PZC 0342023, a request by Custom Wood Kitchen Incorporated, the owner and Urban Trigear business owner regarding the property at 17 East Chicago Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A zoning ordinance variance request to reduce the number of off-street parking stalls in the B2 general business district. Good evening.
All right, we're going to hold off here and let everyone leave, because that was pretty damn intimidating, I'll tell you that. Wow, all right. So my name is Preston Bolcos. I own Urban Trigear. We are a family-owned and operated niche sporting goods shop here in Westmont. We've been in business since 2004. We started our brick and mortar in Westmont over in St. James Crossing, and we've grown throughout the years. So we've been here quite some time. We are seeking a parking variance at 17 East Chicago Avenue, which I currently have a contract pending on approval to purchase the building from the Deckers over there. And this is in the B2 district, which is, currently does not have enough parking under the codes or the codes in what's available in the B2 district according to the size of the building. Our current retail location is in St. James Crossing, occupying 31, 3,150 square feet of retail. And then I also have a storage in the Westmont Business Park over by Ty Warner, and that's occupying 2,600 square feet for our backstock and our fixtures. We go to different events. We go to FMC, which is the auditorium. So we're vending at those swim meets, various locations, and it occupies pretty much a pop-up shop, so it requires a lot of backstock and whatnot. Currently, our parking pattern per hour is about one to three cars throughout the day. I pulled a little bit of tape, tape roll, so we're looking at max about three transactions roughly this year per hour. So it's very niche type of business. People are coming in from all over. Downtown Chicago, they'll come in, they'll come from southwest Indiana, from Wisconsin, and then we have the locals as well. So we are drawing from a wide variety for particular items for swimming, biking, running, triathlon needs, which is also good for the downtown district, which I think would be good to bring in people from outside to, you know, go visit restaurants and see the different portions of downtown Westmont. We've done a great job bringing in business into the St. James Crossing for variety of restaurants and then also bringing attention to the workout facilities over there. But currently, we have a parking issue there, which is overwhelming at times for our youngsters and our families that are trying to come into our retail center, our retail store because of the occupancy of time, which is 45 minutes to an hour and 15 because of the types of businesses that have overcome St. James Crossing throughout the years. And it's a major concern that we have for our families that are bringing in small children to get goggles or swimsuits and stuff like that that are crossing the parking lot. And then we have frustrated, I would say, athletes coming through that are not my athletes but workout athletes, trying to find parking rapidly so they can get into their next workout in there. So it's, there are a lot of jockeying around. And my concern is mainly those younger, the families with young kids. I've seen, you know, five-year-olds darting across the parking lot, and it gets to be a concern. So we've been looking for a property for over 10 years, and during the search, we found not much available that would suit our needs. We've looked up and down Cass Avenue and Ogden Avenue. Cass Avenue, certain, certain parts of Cass Avenue were like, it's still street parking. It may be a concern, that may not be a good fit for our business. And then we saw 17 East Chicago Avenue come up, which is custom wood and cabinets from the Deckers, and seems like a really good fit for our type of business. So they currently have 3,500 square feet of retail showroom, 3,500 square feet of back room. So this will cut down on my traveling back and forth between our store and then going down to, or down to the Westmont Business Warehouse, bringing stuff back and forth. It's all contained under one roof, just making it a little bit more efficient, and it just makes better sense in our business, so. Under this current code, we have, we would need 35 parking spots for the square footage of that building. That, I really don't feel that that's necessary at all. We would have to knock down half the building, and it's just, that just does not seem practical at all. Let's see here, we have, we have four years left in St. James Crossing as well, so we feel that this is a good time because of, we've moved from spot to spot even within St. James Crossing in capturing our clientele. Sometimes it's a challenge because they're so used to going into the same spot, and it does take about three years for us to make sure that everyone comes back to our location and we're not losing business. So it's kind of falling into the right timeline right now for us. We did, we did have Apple Valley next to us for a number of years. We fed well off of each other, which Apple Valley is now just a block down from us. Nature's Best, which is right next door, it's going to be a nice complement. We have young families and healthy people that want fresh foods, organics, and staying healthy for triathlon needs and also sporting goods, so. Yeah, if there's any questions, I'm just seeking a parking variance, nothing too spectacular, just, you know, it's a very limited amount of spaces there. It's more than adequate for what our line of business is. Yeah, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's before you is basically our parking requirements state that when a new use goes into an existing business in the B2 district, parking should be analyzed. And this is an older property that doesn't have a lot of parking spaces there, so this is the village's opportunity to analyze the businesses going in there and saying, is it appropriate? So we consider the use as a sporting goods store, and then we have a calculation that says one parking space for every 200 square feet, and that's indiscriminate in terms of how much is showroom and how much is storage for your product. So in essence, we are requiring parking spaces for, in this case, 7,000 square feet of building where half of that building won't have employees or customers venturing through it. So what the petitioner has done is said, well, look at my sales, look at what I usually do on average. There are 10 parking, there are 10 definable parking spaces in front of the building. There are actually about four behind the building that is more of a gravelled area. I'd encourage that, you know, if you have employees parking, that you have them park out back versus out front. But basically, it, our code would require 35 spaces going by the book. There are 10 defined spaces there, so it's a deficiency of 25 spaces. So what the request is tonight is, do you feel that the use as proposed fits into this? I will tell you that this is a strange building for the B2 commercial district because it has such a large, because for years it was a contractor's, like, retail shop and showroom. So they had a lot of requirements for the, kind of, the back space, not the showroom space. It's not desirable to a lot of users, and it's hard to find a user that looks at this and embraces that kind of space. So it seems that, you know, the amount of parking that he's shown that he drives, when combined with the use, it seems like the space is well-made for this use. But that's obviously for you to debate and question, and I'm always here for questions. All right, thank you.
If I could add to that, because I think you bring up a good point, that the parking calculations for a sporting goods store are based on the square footage of the entire building, regardless of what portions of the building are actually used for retail merchandise display and sales. Here, you've got over 50% of the building used for warehousing, and if you were to take the warehousing parking requirements, I think it's, once, let me double check, one space for each two employees, based on the maximum number of employees using the space at any one time. So if they were to have two employees on site, that would result in one parking space for the entirety of the warehouse area, and then a smaller number of spaces for the actual showroom sales area. It still may, may result in 17 to 20 parking spaces and the need for a variance, but it would be less extreme than what they're required to apply for here.
The code is really defined for what we consider high-volume commercial uses, so that could be your Walmart, you know. So the code is written for the scenario where it's mostly retail floor space and very little storage, which is what the Targets and Walmarts do. They move all their product out. So it kind of is detrimental when you have someone that actually has a storage need for their product.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public? Mr. Deckard, you have any comments?
No.
And seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Berry, why don't you start again?
Thank you. And thank you, Preston. I'm very familiar with St. James Crossing. I have a couple friends that have businesses there, and I frequent one for breakfast a lot. So I think your 10 spots here will be a drastic improvement over what I see a lot of times there. Again, you know, there's so much activity. But I do notice that I always see you there early in the morning working, and I know as a small businessman, that always equals success, and I think we've seen that. I've seen your community involvement at numerous things throughout the years since you've been in business. So we always thank that, and we always welcome that. And I would really look forward to having this on the Naperville corridor, and I think this is going to be a great fit, and I could, I could see where this can work well with Apple Valley. They, they're closed on Saturdays. One thing with Apple Valley is that as many people as they bring in, the record store, they're very successful on Saturdays. So Apple Valley doesn't have that, so that community works really well there, and I think that's, you know, a benefit to you, and I think it's a great fit, as you said, with the vegetable stand, and again, Apple Valley and the record store, and, you know, now we have Mrs. T's Pizza and other things going on there. So really look forward to it, and I think it's a, it's a no-brainer here, so, thank you.
Commissioner Scales?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and congrats on the success of your business. I agree with what Commissioner Berry said.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Has staff received any kind of comment from the public on this, neighboring properties?
We have not received any communication from anyone regarding this case before tonight.
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Peterson?
So you were saying that at your store at St. James Crossing, so in four years you'll be closing that?
Questionable. So, I mean, we've outgrown our space in St. James Crossing, and the current landlord, and I don't want to say this too loud because, you know, he's probably watching at some point, but they're not really being reasonable enough for our expansion into the old Apple Valley, which has been vacant for four-plus years. So we've asked over the years, like, hey, you know, how about a reasonable rent here? Match our price per square foot? They're not being reasonable at all, which is forcing us to say, well, the success of our business is only allowed to grow as we can grow, and we're being choked out in this location. So then we had to get the warehouse area, and we're bouncing back and forth. So it may be, our stores' growth has also been through the swimming community as well. We may need to continue to use the other location as well, still at St. James Crossing, but we'll come across that if we can't capture all of our business and put it under one roof.
I am familiar with your business in St. James Crossing, and I think it's awesome. It'll bring in people to the, hopefully to downtown and give you guys a little more space to grow, and I think it's a, it's a great, great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, it's, this is an easy one. As opposed to.
Yeah, I mean.
So, yeah, I'm in favor of it, and it makes perfect sense.
Commissioner Van Buren? I am too. I am too. The chair would stand under PZC 034203, 2023, a zoning ordinance variance request to reduce the number of off-street parking stalls in the B2 general business district.
So move Scales.
Second, Berry.
Scales, second from Berry.
Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. There you have it. It's unfortunate that you didn't go first tonight.
So again, Joe, Joe will notify you when you're, be going before.
Actually, I believe we have the date, and since this is not one that had a lot of debate, they are on the schedule for December 16th. That is a 6:00 PM meeting. It does not run the same way. You just need to be present if there's questions, but I know that our board loves to welcome business and loves to thank you for showing that you're doing your expansion in brick and mortar within the boundaries of the village. So I would anticipate they will ask you at least to just, to speak a little bit, so.
Yeah. Excellent. Good luck, gentlemen. Next item, open forum. As we didn't move that back after.
Actually, we are going to leave open forum at the end so that we can get through our business first, so you'll see that open forum will always be just before miscellaneous from this point forward.
Then, seeing no one for, under open forum tonight, so miscellaneous, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? Harold.
I do, to Joe and, I guess, to staff in general. I know we had Mrs. T's Peets in here, and we had him in twice, and the second time we had him in for landscaping and covering and so forth. I, I think many people in the village, I know I've talked to a couple of people, but, you know, that, all those trees have died.
Yes.
So, you know, again, when we talk about these things, we, we put in all this effort to do this, it's really good when we can see them enforced, and, and I know that, like you say, a lot of people are on it, but just something I wanted to bring up here tonight.
And, and they are still on a temporary certificate of occupancy, and one of their conditions was they need to replace all those, and we were hoping that they did it before winter hit, because the other thing is getting the plant materials from the nurseries, and at the end of the season, it's hard. So we encouraged them to try to do it before October 15th. They didn't get it done, so they're still sitting without a full CO. It probably will sit till spring with a temporary CO, and then we will, we still have the enforcement to make them do the corrections, and by then, we will make them also replace what's died between now and then. So basically, we will go back out and do a full landscape inspection.
I'd also point out that the ordinance that approves site plans and landscaping plans in almost all instances requires that all landscaping, fencing, et cetera, be continuously maintained, replaced as necessary. So if a fence blows down or if a tree dies as part of the required landscape plan, they've got to repair or replace it, maintain it.
Yes, thank you. That's all I had, thank you.
All right. I would just point out that this Saturday is Veterans Day. The Westmont High School and will be having a ceremony at 8:30 Friday morning that the public is invited to, and also Westview Middle School in South Cass is having one that afternoon at 1:30. Friday, of course, is the Marine Corps birthday, for those who care, and.
Mr. Chair, since you meant.
Saturday morning, the village will not be having a Veterans Day ceremony this year as such, but American Legion Post 388 will be gathering at the Veterans Memorial at the north end of Veterans Park at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning.
I just wanted to mention that since you mentioned Friday, the village offices are closed, since we mentioned it, and we have an audience, I thought we should mention that as well.
And our next planning and zoning meeting will be on the second Wednesday of, or December on the, on the 13th.
And that's shaping up to have about seven cases, so.
It will be.
I know we're, we're going into the holidays, so if anyone cannot attend, please let me know as soon as you can.
I wait for, I wait for the packet.
I'd say the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move Thomas. And I have second Scales.
Okay, roll call.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
All right. So much for our easy meeting.